Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. If everyone would please stand for our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Good evening to everyone on a nice mild February day. I'm glad to see everyone here. Good evening to my fellow board members. Everybody's had a chance to review our minutes from our previous meeting. We get to the correct place. Here we go. So everybody's had a chance to review the meeting, the minutes from our, I don't have my green sheet, from our January eighth, two thousand twenty-four meeting. If there are no additions or deletions to that, we entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And motion carries. Let's see. Did we receive closed session minutes? Okay. Okay, all right. Everyone's had a chance to review our closed session minutes. If you haven't, and you need to take a second to look through those, just let me know. Yeah. All right. Everyone good on those? If there's no additions, if there are any additions or deletions, we'll make those in closed session. If not, I entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries. Do we have any addition or deletions to our agenda for tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries. All right, moving on to good news. Mr. Rice.
Good evening. Haseel and Colton, come on up. Mr. Canfield. Once again, we have Mr. Earl Canfield with the Rotary to help us this evening. We'll have Haseel come stand closest. I come to you this evening with our February Rotary Student of the Month for Pamlico County Middle School and Pamlico County High School. First, from Pamlico County Middle School, the February Rotary Student of the Month is Haseel Perez Mendoza. Mr. Rice Snyder had this to say about Haseel. Haseel is a current seventh grader at Pamlico County Middle School. He consistently demonstrates exceptional academic performance across all subjects. His dedication to learn and his enthusiasm in the classroom sets a remarkable example for his peers. Haseel also exhibits strong leadership skills and has proven to be a positive influence on his classmates. Additionally, Haseel always has a smile on his face. His teachers cannot think of another student who always has such a positive attitude. He is always prepared and eager to learn. Haseel is a model student who works hard and is helpful and kind to his classmates and teachers. He has an infectious personality and adds a lot of joy and energy to the classroom. He is one of a kind. Beyond grades, Haseel exemplifies integrity, kindness, and respect in all areas of school. Congratulations, Pamlico County Middle School Rotary Student of the Month, Haseel Perez Mendoza. Next, for Pamlico County High School, the February Rotary Student of the Month is Colton Hall. Ms. Lanchy had this to say about Colton. Colton is a very hardworking and kind student who is always willing to assist others when needed. In the classroom, he helps his peers with difficult problems by coaching them. Colton has maintained straight A's since his freshman year while taking more rigorous honors and AP level courses. In addition to his academic achievements, Colton shows great leadership potential. He is currently serving as the FFA Vice President for this school year. As an FFA officer, Colton helps run meetings, plan activities, and organize events the FFA program hosts and participates in throughout the year. A year ago, Colton participated in bee school with the Craven Pamlico County Beekeepers Association. Since completing bee school, Colton has spent the last year helping get the beehives established at our school as one of our primary, two primary beekeepers. Colton and another student helped maintain the hives by conducting regular checks of the hives, adding frames or boxes, refilling the feeders, and even mowing around the hives when needed. I guess the regular mower doesn't want to cut around. Colton has also learned so much about bees over the last year and has done a great job showing other students how to care for the bees as well. Colton is an all-around awesome student who excels academically and in extracurricular activities. We know that he has a bright future ahead of him. Congratulations, Pamlico County High School Rotary Student of the Month, Colton Hall.
I guess I should have called you because I came, woke up one morning and there was a hive on one of my fig trees. So I immediately called one of my neighbors to see if they were missing a hive. They said, "Just leave it alone, it won't be gone." Sure enough, the next morning I was gone. And I was actually reported. Congratulations. And just so you all know, now what grade are you in? Okay, maybe I'll see you next year. So the Rotary, we say we're gonna give two five thousand dollars to scholarships. But since I started, we get three. I still have a nice two with this one. And then for the top thirteen students in Pamlico County of seniors, we give them five hundred dollars cash from the Rotary. So, and that's what actually the vote show actually makes money for. That's what we give them. They used to give time for that.
And we thank you for that.
And thank you.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
So tonight, I get to make a special award to a very special person. And before I do that, because not only should you shake my hand, but I think you should shake everybody else. So if my fellow board members will just come stand down in front. Rachel and Jeremy, please. So tonight, we're, as I said, we're honoring a very special person. And Mr. Curtis, if you want to come up here. The Pamlico County Schools Retirement Service Award presented to Stephen B. Curtis in appreciation for twenty-four years, nine months, of dedicated and outstanding service to the children and staff of North Carolina, March first, two thousand twenty-four. Thank you for believing in children, for guiding through example, for inspiring with passion, for living through, for living through loving, for leaving an indelible mark on the future, for touching the human soul. You have made a difference. Personally, I'd like to congratulate you. We're gonna miss you. You've done so much for the school system. Our new building project, we wouldn't be where we are without you. With that, that's a load of work. And it definitely will have your mark on it. If we do our traffic circle, we said we're gonna name that the Steve Curtis Roundabout. But no, seriously, thank you. We're gonna miss you, but we congratulate you. And like I said before, some of our board members and some of you out here have already reached retirement. The rest of us are working for it. So congratulations and enjoy your retirement. And I'm gonna ask that you go down the line. First, do you want to make any comments?
I'll just say that I wanna thank the Board of Education for taking a chance on me almost twenty-five years ago. I was a banker working across the street, knew nothing about school finance, and it was a totally different ballgame. Just a matter of fact, one of the board members back then is still here, Mr. John McCarter. And they took a chance on me and it just, I mean, changed my life real good. I was ready to get out of banking. I wanted something locally here in town, and it was just perfect fit. So I'm very thankful and thankful for all the support I've had over the years from all the different administrators and principals. Everybody's been very good to me, so great.
Thank you.
It was a perfect gift for us, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Is that one of you come up, please? Go down a little more here, it's just. Get your gear, get your gear. That way it's big hole between y'all.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I hit the back button. And I went by too many steps and I found it in there. Some of my paper. I hit my back button too many.
All right, moving on in our agenda, we do not have any public comment tonight, so we're gonna move on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Happy to deliver the superintendent's report tonight. We're beginning with the membership report. We had no changes at the primary school or Fred Anderson. We did drop six at the middle school and eleven at the high school for a net loss of seventeen students. Of course, a lot of that is attributed to mid-year graduation. So this time of year, that's, that's has become somewhat the norm. But we have a grand total of one thousand one hundred and fifty-one students as of January twenty-sixth. Just to give you a quick update on the calendar, again, we are, we have surveyed teachers regarding the calendar. We are in the midst of working and developing a draft calendar now. We're gonna be talking to our parent advisory council and getting some feedback from them on February twenty-second. Be meeting with our teacher advisory council this week, and we'll be talking to them a little bit more about that, too. And we hope to bring a draft calendar to you for your consideration and review next, at the next board meeting in March. February is Councilor Appreciation, this is actually Councilor Appreciation Week. And we certainly are thankful that we have guidance counselors in all our schools. It was not too long ago when we, when we had had one. So Jennifer Littleton is at the primary school, Jeanette Hales-Williams at Fred Anderson, Erin Blaylock at the middle school, and Betsy McCandless at the high school. If you see these young ladies, please extend your appreciation for them, because we certainly do appreciate the work that they're doing. Next week will be Bus Driver Appreciation Week. And certainly, we appreciate each and every one of our bus drivers. We couldn't do without them, I mean, quite literally. And we thank them for everything they do. They have one of the most important jobs in our district. Next thing on my report is just to bring back the discussion about a board member retreat. We had talked about that. I think we had agreed on April nineteenth. I'm gonna ask Rachel to give a little bit of information about that. Make sure we're still on track to do something like that in April.
Sure. We can do, we can arrange it however you guys want to arrange it. We usually, I would work with the board chair to come up with some sessions that might be helpful to the board members, like board member, just kind of general boardsmanship, good boardsmanship, talking about the role of the board versus the role of the administration. We can also address, we could have a session on, you know, parents, kind of common things that are coming up these days. So we plan sessions, and you all don't wanna hear me talk the whole time, so I usually bring in other speakers from the firm to do those presentations. We can do presentations on speech issues or discipline issues or things like that that might be helpful for the board to know. We can come up with an agenda of the kind of topics that you all want to cover. We can, it can be structured however you want. Your retainer agreement with us gives you two half-day sessions, so we can combine those so that you have a full day of sessions already built into your retainer so that you wouldn't be billed for the sessions. We can do it, you know, if you're looking at the weekend, we can figure out whether or not you all want to come in and do anything Friday night and Saturday morning, or come in Saturday morning and do something Saturday afternoon. I don't know how you feel about having Sunday involved. I know lots of people are not, don't wanna do anything like that on a Sunday. So y'all can just tell me what you want the schedule to look like, and we can do it just about anywhere you're interested in.
Is everyone still good? You know, we talked about that weekend of April nineteenth. And we talked about the facility in Rocky Mount.
Yes, we have an office in Rocky Mount. We could host you guys there.
Yep. And you, we can discuss now, you know, I think coming in on like Friday afternoon, having some kind of dinner or something on Friday night, then we can have a full day on Saturday. We can adjourn on Saturday, or we could adjourn on Sunday morning. So, you know, after the meeting or at some time, just share, each board member, just share your thoughts with me, what you think the agenda timeframe should be. And then we'll work with Rachel on developing an agenda. And if you've got something specific that you'd be interested in, then please let us know. So that's your, that's some of your homework after this meeting. We'll come up with, we wanna do a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or just Friday, Saturday, something like that, and then agenda items. Has anybody got any questions on that?
If you do, they can just shoot into you, John, and let me know. I'm happy to answer.
Okay, yep. We'll work together and we'll get that scheduled and come up with a, y'all have got some specific agenda items, please let me know. A lot of things you just covered would be beneficial.
For sure. Thank you. Thank you very much. For sure. Thank you. Thank you very much, Rachel, and we will, we will get back to you on that. Next thing on the superintendent's report, February is CTE Month. That's a topic that is near and dear to my heart, beginning my career as an agricultural education teacher. Really excited about the direction and things that are happening with Career and Technical Education in Pamlico County. It is a terrific program, and I've asked our Director of Career and Technical Education, Mr. Sean Carey, wanting to come give you a quick update on what's happening with CTE in our district.
Good evening, everyone. My doctor, John, said it is CTE Month, and I think I can take a month to tell you what we've got going on at the high school, but I don't think most of you will like that because you do wanna go around at some point tonight. But I'm gonna just give you a little update of what's going on, and since the beginning of the school. We have lots of pathway areas, and pathways is not a buzzword. It's something that is gonna come very quickly to our students in this year and next year, but here's what we offer at the middle school, and it should have changed, is agriculture, food, and natural resources, hospitality, and tourism, and then STEM, which is science, technology, engineering, and math. And at the high school, we have ag, food, and natural resources, architecture, and construction, arts, AV, technology, and communications, health science, hospitality, and tourism, human services, law and public safety, manufacturing, and transportation, distribution, and logistics. And that's a lot of pathways that we have, and we offer a diverse course schedule for us to detect. New things we have added in '23, '24, Adobe Academy. Kids can get Adobe certifications out of Level 1 and more out of Level 2. We just haven't made it Level 2 this year. Health Sciences is on the comeback. We got rid of it a couple of years ago because of lack of instructor, but Ms. Taylor has taught two sections of it, and the students in there are chomping at the bit for more. So that's a good thing. We've added HVAC, and we're one of the sixth, or we're the seventh school in the state, I do believe, that offers HVAC. So that's something that our kids have advantage in, and we brought back, or we brought into play woodworking this semester. So kids will have something else to do besides construction, because if you think about it, if you wanna cabinet maker right now, I know one cabinet maker, and he's probably about ready to retire, and there's gotta be some young people that take these skills over and start learning these traits because they can make good money by either learning in Mr. Harris's class, going to a two-year college, or doing some apprenticeships. Courses we'd like to add, '24, '25, Teaching as a Profession, this is big now, into the movement of Grow Your Own. We're looking to add this if we can find a qualified instructor, because you just can't pick a CTE teacher and say, hey, let's teach Teaching as a Profession. You have to have a master's degree because of the fact that you get EDU credit from universities. So that's why it's such a higher level of education than just a regular bachelor's degree. We wanna bring back work-based learning. Through our advisory council meetings, these employers are telling us they want our kids. And now the way to get our kids is give them the opportunity to leave during the day and go out and do a work-based learning program. Now, this would not be like the work-based learning that was back in the 70s, 80s, and 90s that some of y'all remember. We're not gonna have kids just riding roads on forever. It's gonna be structured. Biomedical, Ms. Taylor once again found out that she can teach biomedical technology, which has a CSI twist to it. So all these kids are wanting to go into forensics and stuff. Ms. Taylor found a way, and she has license to teach it. And then, of course, we want more honors kids. If you want good classes, you offer honors section because that's what the kids are after. They're after more quality points and GPA points, and you've got a lot of bright kids that are going to fields related to CTE, but they won't take your class because there's not an honors section. So add more honors, you get them in there, and they see what it's all about, and it helps them out further down the road. There's so many kids that have taken our program and came back and said, well, I was at NC State. I was so glad that I took your class because it developed this, 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 and this. It's not just NC State. It's all the rest of them, too. They'll come back and say, Ms. Hardeston prepared me so well for medical classes at ECU because of what she put us through. Nothing torturous or anything like that that anybody can even come to school. But, you know, just show them what college was really like while they were in high school. Our goals and objectives, significantly increase the number of students who earn industry-recognized credentials to the work in PC, HS, CTE courses. This was a goal from last year. It was a good goal, and we're still gonna stick with it. We have a lot of credentials that employers want, and it's offered to our students free of charge. And they can take it up to three times until they actually achieve it. Increase the stuck number of students eligible to take work keys testing. If they leave here and go to Nutrien, Warehouser, National Paper, Mo and Bosch, they're gonna ask, first thing I'll get, they're gonna ask me, what's your work keys for? If you take two, sometimes three, CTE classes, you're eligible to take this class or test for free, and they'll give back a score, and it lets them, the employer, know how they scored and whether they wanna hire them or not. If their scores are not high enough, the employer does give them a chance to remediate. If you Google this and look for places in our area, you'll be surprised. We know people that require work keys testing for you to get a job. Last thing is ensure students graded 6 through 8, 6 through 12, excuse me, are prepared for next year's career development plan implementation. And I'll talk more about that in a second. Our credential results so far, the first year, '21, '22, we had 99 credentials attained, giving us a 7.2% attainment rate. Last year was a significant increase. There's 478 credentials our students earned, moving up to 39.8%. This year, we have kids earned 286 credentials so far. Okay, all the numbers are not in, and we still have next semester to go. So hopefully, we will top that 478. So my calculations and my math might be a little bit off, but it looked like we could have 572 credentials by the end of the school year if we doubled what we got now. So we hope to get, attain that number. Work keys testing, this year, we have 47 students eligible to take the test. Next year, we wanna increase this number by 25% and have 59 students take the test. The more, a lot of kids will find out, Ms. Potter will come around, start talking about work keys. I won't take that test, but you didn't complete a CTE course. Nobody told me. They are preached this from the day they walked from the middle school one about why it's important to be a completer in CTE and what it gives you at the end. And I know a lot of kids, when they're in eighth grade, they have no clue. Some do, so I don't know, or most don't. But it's told to them every year in their classes in three different means that, you know, you wanna take two classes, sometimes three, so you can take the work keys, while it's free, because if you've never done educational testing before, educational testing is expensive. And I tell them this course, if you have to take a day off of work, you take a day off of work, and then you pay $100, you're gonna crave them and take that test. Is it $100? I don't know, but $100 sounds good to me. So they just need to know that they gotta have a little bit of skin in the game when it comes outside of the doors of the house. Next thing, the Magical Senate Bill 193. I don't give you short letters in the Senate Bill 193 because it's one of the ones that keeps me up at night. There's another one about computer science, but we're not gonna talk about that one tonight. This is, all students will have a career plan beginning with the '24, '25 school year. Well, we are way ahead of that curve because we started last year offering Major Clarity to our kids 6 through 12. Major Clarity is a fantastic career development plan. It shows them what they're good at. It shows them careers. It shows their personality types. It shows their learning styles. It shows every university in the country. It has scholarships. I could stand in there for three hours and talk about Major Clarity. If y'all wanna see it, I can do a presentation later time so you can see what we're talking about, but it would take too long tonight because we get into it. But it has all kinds of stuff that they can do career exploration, and they can build their career development plan here. We have other great things. Enough about the technical talk. Let's talk about the kids because that's what we're here for. Okay? We have regional skills A officers for the first time in, I had no idea, because I don't remember ever, from '93 on, having a regional skills A officer. And I know back in the day, it was a fifty, so I get that. But Wyatt Johnson and Cora Rory Miller, they went to a leadership conference, and they, I gave a phone call and said, hey, two of these kids wanna be regional officers. Okay. Well, mine has changed reasons. I said, we can do that? They said, yeah. I said, okay, FFA, you can't change reasons. Read that you have to stay where you're at. I said, let them learn. Worst that happens, they get told no. Next thing you know, about 12 hours later, I get a phone call, we have two regional skills officers. So that's very impressive. Especially, this is a both a freshman. That's usually unheard of in regional state-level CTSOs that freshmen are regional officers. And that says a lot for the kids, and it says a lot for the programs they come out of. We had the first American degree since 1995, and this is the highest degree you can get in the FFA organization. So that's a big plus, too. It took a lot of work, but we got one. Okay?
Do I?
That was your son.
That was my son, yes.
You should drag on him.
I was trying not to, but I was trying to be honest, but yeah. That was my son, and when he was little, he told me, he said, Daddy, I wanna think you got. I said, okay. He knew what it was when he was little, but he quickly found out. So in October, we went to Indianapolis State for a Bible week, and he had a good old time, and he saw lots of stuff, and he got his American degree.
That's good.
We also had FCC LA, which we haven't had no out, and they started back out at the middle school, combined with middle school and high school, FFA, and skills, all with the leadership conferences in the fall, which is a big plus. These kids get a lot out of these conferences, and they learn a lot, and then they can bring it back to school, and they can be leaders within their school. We had kids participating in the parade, and of course, I wanted to find the other community service stuff they were doing, but y'all have been on Facebook before. You know where it is one day, and the next you don't, because there's 9,000 posts in front of it. I couldn't find it because I know they went to horses in Pamlico. I know they've done food drives. I know they participate in the Christmas parade, and they got other things, and I hate to keep listing because I'm gonna leave somebody out, and I ain't right. We've been on the news twice for goodness. So Bosch grant with virtual reality and HVAC, and Koff was here a while ago. He was a very great speaker on the news. They came to talk about the beehives. So we've been up there twice, and that's improvement because most times, people will come to Pamlico County to see what's going on in their schools. But I think Ms. Harwick has found the good contact, and they like to come over, because she says, I love it out here. It's so rural. And she walked around with us, and we're out by the beehive, and all of a sudden, someone goes, is somebody out? Won't answer their phone. I said, what are you talking about? She said that bird noise. I said, you need a rooster over there. And she did. Oh, yeah, I thought it was somebody's phone. She not from here. She didn't know what she was out like. But we see different kinds of people, so. But we're glad to be on the news, and our kids can be exposed to great things. I think the last thing I wanna talk about tonight is, we also have some internships, some programs, and apprenticeships coming up. I have had a lot of kids asking about the FRC East hiring program. This came out the other day, and they truly streamlined their process because there is no application. It's like a government letter and a resume and a letter of recommendation that they can go work for the summer. And then Bosch, or BSH, they have a mechatronics program, and they came and spoke at our school, told us all about how much money they offer them to go to community college, how much they pay at Craven for them to go to school, and how much they give them to start out. And some of the teachers were sitting there, I'm like, close your ears. You don't need to hear this. But we had two that filled out, and I have a feeling that they had very good chances of being part of this program. So what I'll do is they'll go to Craven for three years. While they're in Craven, they get paid $17 an hour to sit in classes. Classes get a whole lot easier if you're getting paid $17 an hour to sit in there, and then they'll go to work at Bosch, and they'll make $17 an hour. And of course, there's increase in increments. When you learn a little bit more, know a little bit more, you make a little bit more money. So, and of course, as it is CTE Month, we are having all kinds of events going on at the high school and middle school. Mr. Rice, right before CTE Month started, they had a middle school CTE night. That was well-attended. Unfortunately, I don't think anybody took any pictures of it because they were too busy eating and playing games. So, but we kinda kicked it off the month with that over there. And that's it. Does anybody have any questions?
Great program.
That's wonderful. Lots of great opportunities for our students.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. And we are very proud of what he's doing. CTE can change lives. I mean, I'm, I am living proof. First time, I'm telling anybody, first time I was ever, I grew up out in western North Carolina and very rural, and first time I was ever to Raleigh, that was a, that was a big deal, was on the FFA trip. First time I was ever on an airplane was an FFA trip. Went to Kansas City for the National FFA Convention. So CTE gives students opportunities, and we, that's not a unique thing. That's a typical thing, just opportunities it's given. So we're excited about the program, where it's going, and everything that we can, we can do with that, and that, what's provided to our students. This time, I'm gonna ask Mr. Rice to come up and give our new school progress update.
That's a hard act to follow. I appreciate you, Dr. Johnson, but next time, if he's gonna be here, you need to put me in here. So I don't have a whole lot to report this month. Couple of things. I've still got our schedule up, and we've made another milestone. Since the last meeting, 50% of the construction documents are ready. The design documents that were completed in December 1st, some of those are actually back on the back table, so feel free if you wanna take a look at those. That's the main part of them. All the electrical and stuff, Corey has those over at meetings. The construction documents, we're hoping to be through by March 1st. Still, everything so far is still on, on schedule. And we're still hoping to stay on schedule right on up until the end to hopefully occupy on June, August 19th or 26th. Baseball field update, we're getting ready, very close to submitting the design documents, which is on the 11th of this month. March 22nd, we've already talked about this, the construction documents out for bid on the 24th of May. Hopefully, start construction in July and be ready to start baseball season February 14th of next school year. This is new, '23, '24 supplemental grant application. This is for recipients that got the $50 million or that first grant, and it's for people that have not started construction yet. That's the 12 million that we talked about. Back when, before the budget came out, there was word that we were possibly eligible to get $10 million, and then when the budget actually came out, it was $12 million, so this is what this is. And we have to show cause that how we need it, why we need it because of increases in supplies and materials and those things. And the architect has completed that. The application actually opened on January 8th, about a month ago, and the deadline is June 30th, but we're hoping that the commissioners will approve that tonight. I'm getting ready to leave here as soon as we get here to go to their meeting, so once they complete it and sign off on it, then I can bring it back and submit it tonight. And these are the same pictures that you seen before. Don't get fixated on these because a lot of this probably has changed or will change. It's just some, some of us. And that's all I have for the same. Do you have any questions? One thing, we're gonna be looking, coming to you probably pretty soon to talk about naming the school. I made the suggestion to the cabinet. I thought HR Rice would be a good name for it, but they didn't seem to, they didn't seem to bite on it. Anyway, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Rice. We appreciate it. Appreciate all you're doing, and by all means, go get that application signed and sent off. Thank you. Just about finished with the report. Just to say, we've had a really good beginning to our semester. It was possibly, felt like to me, the longest January in the history of Januaries, but it was long. But we, we made it through and looking forward to a, a great, a great spring semester. The last thing on my list, just to bring to your attention, with the passage of the budget, also came another requirement, and that was conflict of interest training. You and all have, we talked about that the other, a couple of months ago, and that was to approve the, the mode that we'll use to, to provide that training. And that's through the North Carolina Association of School Administrators. They've got a train in, and we did that. Upon further review, anybody who is administering contracts, approving contracts, that kind of thing, also has to do it, which includes all of you. So we'll be getting together with you about how we can get you all trained. We've gotta do that by April 3rd. So just to put that on your radar. And, Mr. Chairman, that's everything that I have tonight. I know it's board member time. Anything that the board wants to share this time?
I just wanted to say, appreciate the recognition for board, board appreciation month. Also, had an opportunity to attend the Spelling Bee. Was very impressed with those young children getting up on stage and spelling those words and, you know, their courage. those words, and, and, you know, their courage.
I, I'd also attended the Spelling Bee at the middle school. It was, it was wonderful. They did a great job. Um, and I also attended the art show in, um, Oriano, the Women's Club Art Show. And our students had some wonderful pieces of art. I was very impressed. That was nice.
I'd just like to truly thank you from the bottom of my heart for all that you did in January for this board. We appreciate you so much. It wasn't just the gifts, but it was the kind words that were shared on Facebook. You know, when, just when you think nobody is looking, everybody is looking. And we appreciate you, because what we do is because we have compassion and our heart for it. We love you, and we thank you for what you've done for us. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Any other comments from other board members? All right. We're gonna move on to our consent agenda. Everybody's had a chance to look at these. Uh, we can vote on them individually if we need to remove any of them. If not, entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries. All right, moving on to instruction. Ms. Dixon?
Good evening. Beginning this month at Pamlico County Middle School, eighth grade students will have the opportunity to participate in the Personal Responsibility Education Program as a part of the Advocates for Youth Organization and in collaboration with East Carolina University. This is in accordance with North Carolina General Statute one fifteen C, eighty-one thirty-two, and our local board policy thirty-five forty, which is our comprehensive health education program. As a part of this, the board is required to notify parents at least fourteen days in advance of the start of this program, and provide them with the opportunity to exercise their parental rights to either give consent or withhold consent from participation in this program. And so tonight, you've been provided with a draft copy of the letter that will go home to parents, including the components of this program, um, and also the opportunity for them to either give their consent or withhold it. As a part of this program, there's also a pre and post survey, and all of the lessons and the survey can be reviewed by contacting me here at the central office. So this is an agenda item for informational purposes, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding this program or its start at the middle school. Yes, sir?
Ms. Dixon? Let's say we have a parent that does not want their ti- kid to attend. What's the plan for them? My fear is, I just wanna make sure they're not...
Just sitting somewhere doing nothing. No, sir. They'll be absorbed into another elective class during that time. Um, so Coach Hardison and Ms. Karen Kate, the school nurse, will be the ones that will be delivering this program. They've been through the training. And then the other elective courses, whether it's media or PE, that are going on during that time, or STEM, the students will be absorbed into that program during that time.
So this would be during their normal, like, physical education period?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is it an all or nothing type? I mean, if, if there was components that parents saw would be beneficial, or components that they wanted to, of their child not to participate in, is it an all or nothing program?
The program itself, or the components, the way it'll be delivered at the middle school, the consent into the program is yes. It would be everything. However, we can provide the exact same lessons that we're gonna go over with the students, and all the resources to parents. So for example, if parents wanted to have the opportunity to sit down with their students and go through that sensitive material together as a family, we can provide those resources for them.
What's the procedure if a letter is not returned?
We can't have them participate in the program without consent. So it's not just a, we didn't hear from you, we're gonna go ahead and, and put you in the program. We have to have written consent for participation.
And how are the letters gonna be sent?
They're gonna be sent home as soon as you guys approve them. And then there'll be an alert now call that'll go home to eighth grade parents, saying the letter has gone home.
So the students will be taking the letters, or, okay.
Any other questions?
No more questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Curtis, you're not done yet.
Yeah, I've still, I've still got work to do. All right, I've got a, a couple of handouts to give you. Okay, these are, uh, a couple of budget amendments that we're requesting approval for. The first one is the State Public School Fund. Um, we get allotment revisions from DPI all the time. I mean, they come in weekly, or every couple of weeks, and, um, we don't always just turn around and do a budget amendment every time it comes in. But, um, I felt like it would be appropriate to go ahead and, um, do these. So the first one is to the State Public School Fund, and you see an increase in the State Public School Fund, uh, revenue, one million twenty-seven thousand four oh six eight seven, and increase in textbooks, thirty-two thousand five fifty-five oh two. And then you see the, uh, offsetting expenditures, where there are increases and decreases in purpose function code. And again, and those expenditures equal the in, the same increase as the revenues, one million fifty-nine thousand nine sixty-one eighty-nine. The original, uh, State Public School Fund budget was just a little over twelve million dollars. Uh, and then by adding this amendment to it, the, uh, current appropriation for the State Public School Fund is thirteen million oh sixty-one eight fourteen eighty-nine. So that is, uh, the State Public School Fund. And if y'all have any questions along the way, you can please let me know. Otherwise, I'll just go on, there's two more. Any questions on that one? And this is money we were anticipating getting. I mean, it's not like this is a windfall of surplus dollars by any means. All right, the second one is to the Local Current Expense Fund. And you see the revenues there. There is a, uh, decrease in the county appropriation of twenty-nine thousand five seventy-four, and an increase in the appropriation to Arapahoe Charter School, twenty-eight thousand seven ninety-four, as well as a appropriation to the North Carolina Virtual Academy, uh, seven hundred and ninety dollars. Uh, the North, North Carolina Virtual Academy is out of Durham, and we have one Pamlico County student that is an online student at the North Carolina Virtual Academy. And so we have to pay current expense funding for that one student to the North Carolina Virtual Academy. That's all I'm gonna say about that. The other, the one up above it, um, that is, um, when we, when, when I do the budget at the beginning of each year, I estimate the number of Pamlico County, uh, students in our enrollment, what our ADM is, and then I estimate how many Pamlico County domiciled students the Arapahoe Charter School will have. And I kinda base it on the year-end numbers from the, from the previous year. Try to be conservative with it. Uh, but the numbers have kinda flipped on me this year. Uh, we've, since, um, since my budget, original budget estimate, uh, we've lost about twenty-two students, and they've gained, I think, about ten or twelve. Uh, so that's why you see an increase in their appropriation. So they're just getting a little bit bigger chunk of the, uh, county appropriation for current expense funding. Of course, and, and we do that, we calculate every month. They send me their ADM every month, and then I recalculate it. So, you know, it's nothing to say that there could go down, or ours could go back up, but right now, that's where it stands, uh, for that appropriation. So that's not real good. So just passing that along. And then a, um, there's a fund balance appropriation of eighty thousand dollar, eighty thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars. Uh, some of that is to make up that difference in that lost county, county appropriation. Uh, and then the other is for, um, increase in originally, what we originally budgeted for raises, mainly for non-certified people that are paid from local funds, increase in, uh, benefit rates, both retirement and, and hospitalization. So an increase of eighty thousand three hundred and forty-eight. And ag, and then on the expenditures, you see the either increase or de- decrease in the expenditures by the, uh, purpose codes. And so down towards the bottom, the original local current expense budget was four million seven twenty-six, uh, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand one hundred dollars. And then with the additional eighty thousand three forty-eight, uh, the budget is now four million eight hundred and six thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars. Any questions on that? All right, I'm gonna keep going. All right, the last one is the, uh, Other Restricted Fund, or, or Fund Eight. Uh, this is where, um, grants, uh, different, uh, grant, uh, funding goes. And you can see there at the top on the revenues, we've got increases and decreases. Uh, most of them fortunately are increases. Uh, there's a small decrease in the sales tax refund, which came in a little bit less than what I had, uh, estimated by five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, the MAC claims, Medicaid administrative claims, um, increased in fifty-two thousand four twenty-three. Uh, we actually seek, received a thousand dollar donation for the new, uh, high school baseball field. Uh, I think that was the sheriff's doing, putting out the feelers for looking for donations for that. Uh, increase in the budget amount for indirect cost by twenty-five thousand. Uh, the Bosch Community Foundation Grant, we received that again this year, uh, which, uh, the CTE program is utilizing, is thirteen thousand four oh six. Uh, for, from the Perry Griffin, uh, Foundation, we've received ninety-three thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. And that, that mainly is for the, uh, teacher signing bonuses that we have, that we offer to our, um, new teachers and for hard-to-field positions. And then also, that Perry Griffin Foundation has funded the course position over at the high school for quite a few years now. So that's what that is for. And then you see two, uh, fund balance appropriations. One is for the athletic grant from DPI. We received that a couple of years ago, and it's been used for some major improvements in both the football field, baseball field, and softball field. And so we had a little bit of money left over from last year that rolled into the fund balance, so we're re-appropriating that, thirty-nine thousand nine nineteen eighty. And then again, from the Perry, Perry Griffin Foundation, we had money left over, uh, from last year, so we re-appropriated that, uh, thirty-six thousand nine forty-seven oh nine. And then you see the increase in the expenditure codes. So the net increase in fund, in the Other Restricted Fund is two hundred and fifty-five thousand four sixty-five eighty-nine, for a total, uh, fund date budget of seven hundred and eighty thousand four eighty-two eighty-nine. Any questions on any of those?
Okay, with no questions, we do need a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented.
Motion? Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, the next item is a, the, um, PRC oh seventy-one is the state supplemental, uh, funding for, uh, teachers. And I think you have that, it's in your packet, and let's... Okay, the, the, uh, PRC Program Report Code oh seventy-one is State Supplemental Funds for Certified Teachers and Instructional Support Personnel. This is the third year that the state has allocated funds for, uh, for the certified teachers and instructional support personnel. Uh, it is a recurring fund, so unless something drastic happens, this will continue to, um, be funded each and every year. And they give us a pot of money. Uh, we have to determine how it is, um, kinda divvied out among the, among the staff. And we, I think we had a discussion about this last month, talking about it. Historically, when the, when the, uh, General Assembly gives raises to teachers, seems like they're focusing on the younger teachers, trying to, I guess, keep them here, giving the larger raises to the, uh, new teachers, starting with, you know, zero years going on up. And then as you go up in years of experience, the, uh, the raise goes down. Um, so, uh, you know, we feel like the best thing to do is to reward the, uh, the seasons teachers, the ones that have been here the longest, and give them the largest, uh, pot of this money. The budget is, that we had to spend was three hundred and fifty-three, a little over three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. And so what you have before you is, um, I put the percent increase in pay from last year to this year for each, um, step, starting with, uh, year, of course, with zero, zero, but with, starting with year one. It shows the number of certified employees that we currently have on that step, and what the recommendation is for the individual supplement. So the lowest supplement is at the, at the very, starting with the zero-year teachers, which is twenty, uh, twenty-two hundred dollars. And then it gives a supplement total for that step. And then as you go down, and the raises were less for those, um, more experienced teachers, uh, have increased the amount of the individual, uh, supplement. Um, it's pretty straightforward, uh, until you get down to the, if you look under the Certified Personnel Pay Step, uh, down towards the bottom, you see a sixteen to twenty-four year category. And what happens is, when you get to that sixteenth year, you don't get a step increase, you get an increase from the state if they actually just raised the pay scales. But the pay is the same for year sixteen through year twenty-four. And as you can see, they got a two point oh four percent raise this year compared to last year. And we have thirty-two teachers in that sixteen to twenty-four category. When you hit year twenty-five, you get another, you get a decent raise for one year. But then when you get to year twenty-six and on out, it's the same thing again. You don't get it, you don't get a, take advantage of a, of a step increase. And so you can see there, they also got a two point four, oh per, uh, four percent increase. The, the maximum amount of the, of this supplement we can give is three thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars. And so that's the, the number I have down there towards the bottom. So between the sixteen to twenty-four year, and then the twenty-six year plus, that's fifty of the hundred and fourteen teachers right there. That, uh, two point oh four percent is about a hundred and ten dollars a month raise, which is ridiculous. And I think up at the, the, for the beginning teachers, the seven point six eight, I think it was two hundred and sixty-eight, two hundred and seventy, or something like that. So anyway, we wanna reward the more experienced teachers that got the smallest, smaller raises from the state of North Carolina. And that's how we have that, um, those funds divvied up. So, um, I'll be more than happy to try to answer any questions, but, uh, we will go ahead and process this in the, uh, February pay, and get those, get everybody paid that, uh, is entitled to this money. Any questions?
If there are no questions, we do need a motion to approve the funding plan, um, as presented tonight. Motion?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Well-deserved bonuses. All right, moving on to governance, and I think, Dr. Johnson, you're gonna handle this one?
Yes, sir. Uh, you see there, it's attached to your agenda, the, um, regular board meeting schedule for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Um, we're sticking with Mondays. Ms. Harwick told me, um, Pamlico County Schools has been in existence since eighteen, what? Eighty? Eighteen eighty-five. And, and the Board of Education has met on the first Monday of the month since eighteen eighty-five. So we're gonna, not break with tradition, we're gonna present this, this schedule to you all tonight for your, uh, review and approval.
Yep. Everybody's had a chance to look at those dates. Everybody's had a chance to look at those dates. Any questions on those? Are you hearing none? Entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and motion carries. All right, Mr. Gibbs, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
I move that the Pamlico Commu- Pamlico County Board of Education entered into closed session to consider confidential student matters as provided in NC General Statute one four three dash three one eight point eleven A one, and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act twenty USC twelve three two G, and GS one fifteen C dash four oh two. Confidential matter, personnel matters are provided in NC GS one four three dash three one eight point one one A one, five and six, and one one five C dash three nineteen, and to consult with the Board of Education Attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege as provided in General Statute one forty-three dash three one eight point one one A three.
All right, have a motion, need a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, we're in closed session. At seven.
All right, we're back in open session. I need a motion to approve the personnel report for action as presented in closed session.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor raise your right hand and motion carries. Everybody on on assembly you're able to see our next meeting dates. The next one will be Monday, March fourth. And I think that's it for everything tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion.
Second, motion second, all in favor raise your right hand and we are adjourned.
I've never had that much.